All right, I'm gonna call the meeting, Hancock County Commissioners, meeting for February 21st.
I want to move to adopt the agendas presented with the exception of changing the name on item 8C, Travis Trude to Tyler Ham, and adding an item between 10 and 11 titled Treasure, set tax due date and rate of interest that shall apply to the delinquent taxes committed during the tax year.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment? We'll move on to our minutes.
I want to move to approve the minutes of the February 6th Commissioners' regular meeting is presented.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Miller, are you on the line?
Good morning.
Do we have some contracts today?
Deer Isle and Sedgwick.
I want to move to approve the regional animal control agreement between the town of Deer Isle and Hancock County is presented.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
I move to approve the 2024 Regional Animal Control Officer MOU between the town of Deer Isle and Hancock County is presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I want to move to approve the regional animal control agreement between the town of Sedgwick and Hancock County is presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna, Miller, do I interrupt you?
No.
I thought I heard him. Okay, I'm gonna move to approve the 2024 Animal Control Officer MOU between the town of Sedgwick and Hancock County is presented.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, Miller, without getting into specifics of towns, so we might have some, a town not signed up for the next year, is that right?
Sullivan is new this year, but what we haven't done is we haven't heard from Sorrento yet. So, so far with the Sullivan-Sorrento switch, we're as same as we were last year. I will contact someone in Sorrento and see what the problem is there.
Yeah, we don't know of any issues or anything, do we, in terms of?
No, so far, everyone I've talked to has been very happy.
I don't know that it was necessarily anything to do with performance. What, we had an inquiry that was sent over to us at the beginning. Apparently, they had some came over with their select board and asking about how the contract was situated and all that. And, I mean, we could assume things from it, but I, I don't think that they were, they were a little baffled by the fact of paying a annual stipend and then also paying for the service, I guess. So, that potentially could be an issue, but since there was a change between where people were involved originally.
But it wasn't a before.
But nothing that anybody has said so far to me or anything else. And when we reached out to them, we haven't really, so far, got a lot of feedback one way or the other, so I'm assuming.
All right.
Everything that I've heard has just been small-town politics.
That sounds good. Anything else, Miller?
I sent you an email this morning just for your information, no action necessary today.
Yeah, we all read it, so.
Yep.
Appreciate it. All right, we move on to the airport.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have.
Good morning.
Morning. Let's go, Lira.
Look, all I got is, we got a few pieces of excess equipment we just wanna liquidate. That's what I've got here is, we got a one-ton rusted-out truck, three-point sweeper for the tractor, and a big generator. We got some other stuff, but that'll be another day.
Your descriptions really whetted my appetite to do some purchasing.
Looks to me like it just, how much is the price of?
Which is it weigh, yes?
Yeah, yeah, that's probably where it's all gonna end up, is how much does it weigh? Let somebody else figure out how much it weighs.
I want to move to approve advertising that the excess equipment at the airport for sale by sealed bids is recommended by the airport manager.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's all I got. Life is good out here.
All right, so, thank you, thanks. All right, now we're ready to, we need to open up some minutes for the detective vehicle.
Unsealed, sealed bid.
So we've got two. Uh, let's see, first one is from Quark Auto Group. And it is for Chevy Silverado 1500 four-wheel-drive crew cab.
That's, that's Leo, original last page, he writes, if I see. Good deal with Leo.
Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, yeah, very.
All right, we're looking at $52,689.30.
689. Yeah.
All right, next one is Darlings, again, 2024 Chevy Silverado 1500. I have two different, here, so we've got a Chevy Silverado 1500 crew cab pickup. And that is $61,930, that is in stock. And then we have a second vehicle from that, which is a Chevy Silverado 1500, and it's not listing a crew cab. So, so it's not, and it is $59,022, and that one is pending availability, so it's not on, on the lot, so to speak.
Is, uh, is that something on the lot, you know, have you talked to?
I don't know. I think they had a white, I'm not sure which one it was, had a white one.
Well. Considering this is great discrepancy in price here, gentlemen, even if we have to wait for it.
I guess my question is, do you have any concerns on, on, and comments on the, is there a reason we should be weighing on heavier than the other?
I don't have any position on that, because the prices are substantially different, so.
And, do we need to make sure that means that specs are?
We should probably have, you feel confident looking at these and coming back to us in a few minutes?
I can.
Yeah, it's such a difference, so I'm just curious as to. So we have two crew cabs, and one that isn't a crew cab, so that, the one that's, one from Quark, unless it's a, is a crew cab, it's a bad price. You know, the other one is not, it just doesn't say, it just doesn't say, but it's just, it's generated from that.
Well, I think, Bob, if, probably if Quark is, is acceptable, and especially if it's available, I think it's probably, yeah, if you come back to us after we do that.
I'll take it with that.
You might wanna give Leo a call, check with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're just gonna come back to it?
Yeah, we're gonna come back to it, okay, for the next review.
Okay. All right.
Morning.
Morning. As we know, Ernie Finch has moved down to the Sheriff's Department, with his vacancy and our staffing up there. He's been contacted by, I advertise in house, no one, any interest of working, taking the position. I was contacted by a former employee, Rebecca Long, she's very interested in the job, but it comes down to pay where she, where she is now, what, trying to be. If we can get the 11F2, she'd be willing to take the position, but I just don't know where, 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 she left.
Did she do this job when she was here?
No, she was sergeant, nighttime sergeant. She left, and she was gone, she was here for three years. Three and a half years she left and went to the public and the services, and since then, she's been doing investigations up there, been in the jail, working with inmate populations. So, she's been staying in contact with staff, especially inside the jail and stuff. I think she'd be a good fit. And the other reason, this, this is what the hourly rate that Ernie was getting, this was getting, he was at, he was working there. So, the money's in the budget, there's no increase in that line.
My question, my question is, is that within policy?
You were, so normally, we hire within the first three, A, B, C, and it's, if you want to go beyond that, we have to come to you to ask for that permission. And so, with her experience and with the vacancy that's available and the money that's available, that's up to you guys if you are willing to do that.
But we're not going outside of any grammar, so, okay. So I'm gonna move to approve hiring Rebecca Long of Mount St. George's, as community corrections specialist effective, 316, 2024, step 11F2 is requested.
Second motion.
Any further discussion?
Just a question, do you know if the union's gonna have any issue with this? I know when some or other newer contracts, we kind of incorporate in language to give the commission more flexibility, but.
I have not had any, no one, no one has any interest in the position.
All right, so you've gone through everybody, so.
Yeah, we posted first, what, in three weeks now, we've been, we posted 10 days, asked more people. There's one private person's interest, but very limited experience and supervisor's role. This one actually could hit the ground, hit the ground right.
They'll pick up a little more solution.
Right.
All right, I'll call them up.
Aye.
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 Next, is that a Ms. Brenner, or is that Stacy?
Stacy, yeah, that's, I really don't know how to pronounce it, she's only three times like this, I always count. She is a second-year student, has some criminal justice, she's trying to get some education in, in the field of stat, and get a couple of years out of her before she moves on to law.
I move to approve, move to approve hiring Stacy Johnson of Ellsworth, as part-time corrections officer on call, is needed with no benefits, effective 224, 24, step 9A is requested.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The last one is Tyler Ham, who's working part-time with us, he's from the area, he's done a great job, he's looking to move up into full-time position, we have vacancy.
I move to approve hiring Tyler Ham.
Excuse me, just a second. He's, he's, he's approving the offer part-time?
He's already part-time, yes.
So he's got some basic training, right?
Yep.
Doesn't that qualify him for 9B?
We've always said 9A until he gets the academy, once he got the academy, he went to 9C.
What could you see?
C, was academy, C.
B isn't.
We've really never played B into the, the A or.
Well, jeez, I assume that would be a pretty logical step. A, you've got no experience, B, if you're part-time trained, C, if you can.
I'm 100%.
Let's, 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 I don't want to suggest that we adopt F today, that's a pretty logical step, because I always used to jail as how to figure out whether it's an A, B, C. So you come to jail with no experience, you come there as part-time trained, B, you come there full-time academy trained, C.
With that being said, Trundy was just hired full-time, good work, part-time, so he was hired as.
Yeah, we should have addressed it that way, but at some point, we need to correct, I think, as a misstep.
All right.
All I'm gonna ask that you consider, F, I mean.
Yep, 9B, uh, does that create?
Just a step moving forward, I don't think it'll be.
We could, we could fix that step, we could fix that problem.
Right, right.
Where the other?
And I wouldn't be opposed to that, that's right.
I'll bring that next meeting, so we have the dark edition.
I want to move to approve, promote on Tyler Ham's full-time corrections officer with full benefits effective 224, 24, at step 9B is requested.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys. Are you gonna do higher?
Uh, yes. We're gonna dive right in, or you want to listen back?
Yeah, well, we went through the interview process, had a bunch of applicants, and we did out, ended up interviewing three, and made an offer to, to one gentleman, and he got a better offer from his employer, and so we made our offer here to Mr. Ingram, and he is accepted.
Great, so I move to approve hiring Randy Ingram of Ellsworth for the position of skilled maintenance effective, February 24, 24, grade 9B.
Second motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
We had your generator note, email.
Yes. Anything further on that? I do have, I have constant information on a replacement generator, which is in the neighborhood of $65,000. You recall, we talked about this a few years ago, when we had a similar situation, decided to make repairs to this.
Are we replacing the one at the jail?
This is the one at the jail we're talking about, and this is.
Replacing that, or repairing?
No, this, this price would be to replace it, and I think that what, and this is just for your information only, because Michael and I would have to.
So we'd come, yeah, we'd come back to you with a proposal, I mean, the thought was, as we're starting next, probably next month, to look at the ABRA projects, that would be one that we would potentially present to you as something for you to consider.
And, and also, I plan to put together something for the annex as well, which, right, has no generator coverage, period, so. That's, and it's an overall scheme, and we, we actually talked about supplemental power down at the ICC, I think we've got a, a good. That provides a lot of problems, and that we got one power entrance, one transfer switch now, and to separate that area. So, logistically, it's, it's a real trouble, but we have taken steps to, to correct some of the, some of the missteps that we found during the last power outage with respect to powering IT and the ICC, so we'll have a full recommendation for you at some point. It's just to prepare for, the cost of that big generator is the big one.
Yeah, my thing with generator power, one of the things, you can overdo it, you know, in some cases, because then you're just buying maintenance, and, you know, I think essential services makes a lot of sense. And, you know, if cases can be made, yes, but if, you know, to me, if it's marginal. I, I, but I guess that's.
Yeah, well, and from my standpoint, obviously, given that's the emphasis on the policy for this year, and the storm and stuff, I mean, that, we had power, so, okay, we're, we're born to work. Plus, we had a commissioner meeting that morning, which we hated to put off if we, if we could. So, but, obviously, then that led to the discussion of, well, you know, potentially this creates other issues, and I said, well, then, you should put those issues together, and we can have that conversation with the commissioners. If, if they feel under certain circumstances, we shouldn't be running off generator power, or then, you know, we can make those adjustments, I guess, but.
Yeah, because we're lucky now, that, you know, we probably have something to do it, but moving forward, you know, maintenance and all those things, we just gotta weigh whether that's worth it or not. My guess, my.
Of course.
I would hope.
You're responsible not to, yeah.
Yeah, you'd, you'd make a recommendation on this, I guess, if you're Michael.
Well, they just sent me a wondering, if we lose power, we go to the generator, you can't shut the building down, you still need the sheriff's office, you still need the ICC, it's fine.
Yeah, of course.
And I'm saying.
Essential services.
Yeah, you still need the jail, so we get all done, we're talking about the first floor, we're talking about a few lights and a few computers, what else are we saving?
Well, the real, my real fear is the elevator, and we're so lucky.
Yep, shut it off.
Well, then we're no longer handicap accessible.
Too bad, I mean, what's the difference between?
Well, that's why I say essential services.
Shut the, shut the operations down, just thinking that we're gonna shut operations down simply because we don't want a few lights and a few ju, uh, computers, and really. I don't think we can save, I don't think we can save the generator by shutting a couple of lights off.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying that.
Well, why are we shutting the operation down? And if, if we can still accommodate the public, who wants the services of the first floor, probate, commissioner's office, indeed.
Sure, oh, that's why we're having the discussion.
And why do we want to deny that, simply because we don't want that little bit of extra load on the generator? If for that concern, let's replace it on.
Well, yeah, I, I guess we'll have to see here what the proposal is and the alternative is.
It probably will be my recommendation, simply for the reason that, when will we have a chance like this again? So, you know, that's been said a few times, and the commission's been super generous towards facilities, and it's appreciated. I just don't want to go to the well too many times, see what I'm saying? So I wanna, you know, make sure that you're informed all the way.
Just like the discussion we had last month on how much work we want to shave it, let's do it all, we've got plenty of employees, we've never had this opportunity again in a lifetime. Having the funds in place and not from a local taxpayer, so.
Right.
I say, you know, I think this is a no-brainer, let's get that, the generator's 25 years old.
It is, and that's, well, that'll be a part of the recommendation that we, that we make.
So for the time being, project, so for the time being, we have to shut operations down.
Oh. Well, that's, would be up to you guys anyway.
That's why, I, I'm not arguing either way, but when we were having the conversation around the table during one of the department meetings, that had been brought up, and, and, yes, what he had indicated as well, but there was also a thought that our, at the time, was expressed to me anyway, that there, that our additional draw, if, if anything else, helped complicate that outage situation that we had, so. And if that's not the case, then that's, that's fine, I'm not, I'm not here to advocate for getting a day off, I'm not. I, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, you're fine, you're fine with that decision that, that I made, to say, yeah, we're staying open, and even if it means we're running off the generator, and then not run into a situation where they come back and have to explain, well, you know, I kept us open on the generator, and now the generator died, and we had all these other problems. So, that's why we're having, it's proactive conversation with you right now. If your preference is, yeah, let's try to address the, the issue with the generator and getting something new, that would be perhaps a little bit better, and, and more likely not to sustain problems, and allow us to still continue to be here when we, we, when we can be here, that, that's fine with me, I'm not advocating either way, to be honest.
Yeah, the only reason for my comment was if, you know, if adding extra load was like double the trouble in price, that, you know, it would make me think, but.
Yeah.
If it's not a big deal, then I would support it, I'm not, you know, I, I don't know what the alternatives are.
I didn't include any technical data in there, so I guess it's possible.
You know, last time, was it really a failure of the generator or the fuel that was put in?
Well, it's, it's a system failure, for sure.
Yeah, so, I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm getting in the weeds.
Yeah.
Something will come forward, we'll have it.
Yes. Yeah, and again, this is mainly to prepare you for, back your mind for that conversation. Good, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Morning, gentlemen.
All right, so, bits for you, right?
Two, I think.
First time I did this, I ran the.
Downhill belt?
I shredded it like. All right, so the first one's from Glacier, and this is on our printers for printers. Let's see. It's like for a total 21 printers and 10 rolls of, 10 packs of paper. Packages. $13,055.83, so $13,055.83 from Glacier Computer.
Oh, it's lots. Oh, I thought I heard somebody knock. Oh, sorry.
I think it's just.
Or the air change?
Lot of hot air here, I guess.
It's from Advanced Electronic Design.
What is it?
Advanced Electronic Design. And, let's check, also 21 printers. Looks like the same number of rolls. And $16,311.25, so $16,311.25.
Is there any concern with any of those needing?
No, they're both exactly the same.
Okay, so, I'm gonna move to approve purchasing 21 Hancock printers, supplies, and related materials, Glacier computer in an amount of $13,055.83 to be paid for using our funds.
I'm going to keep the whole discussion. All right, I'll second the motion, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is. All right. Want me to take those, Commissioners?
Yeah, so, the original copies we should file with the clerk's office, I'll have to get the other one back too, but I can send you that if you want.
All right.
Last thing I have to discuss regarding current open proposition, each position. We currently have one open positions, last week, we did interviews, and fortunately, we had two bluepens that applied, and they've all tested out very well. But, everything comes with a catch, both of them had buyouts, one of them has not, one of them's only been in the academy, it'll be one year in May, and the other one, it'll be two years. So we supplied with you, I was. So we supplied you, I was, and I apologize for sending this through late, I was gonna try to explain it, but I thought it was better to get it in black and white. It gave you a list of the current trollments, uh, the one vacancy that we have, it's in the budget, we showed that, and we also talked about. Uh, the proposal to fill that second spot once followed our proposition to fulfill. So I guess what I'm asking is, I have currently available. In the G account, the reserve account, fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the buyout. And in this year's budget, there's ten thousand, so we currently have twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Unfortunately, both of those people cost more than that, so, um. I'm gonna have a discuss, I guess, ask. Where do you want to go with that? Are, are you willing to supplement that at this point to help us? And I'll come back with the exact figures and a name the next time, but before I get into that. We'd like to offer, a conditional offer to one of them, uh, to start with, to fill that position that's in the budget.
Right now, we don't know the dollar amounts of buyouts.
The, the truth right now, the buyout for the one that hasn't been there is forty-seven zero twenty-five. Pretty hard because it hasn't been a year. Uh, after May, it drops down to thirty-seven six one nine because it would complete the first year. The other candidate, his buyout is twenty-five eight twenty-one, after May, his buyout will be seven two fourteen, uh, seventeen thousand two fourteen. So. The academy has gone up again, uh, constantly, you know. It's not gonna be long before they're gonna be close to thirty thousand dollars. For buyout figures.
So one of my questions was, uh, so there's this after May thing because of the next calendar year starts.
They would have graduated in May.
Okay, that was the question, so do you hire them? Why would you hire them before graduation as opposed to after graduation, just so somebody else doesn't?
That's, that's, one of them badly wants, the one, obviously, the most expensive one, wants badly to leave the department, they're, they're not happy right now. Um, and our concern is that, uh, we're losing, we're losing, so.
This communicating to him that we'll hire after May is that, I, I just don't know.
We can have, yeah, we're gonna have, we'll have that conversation, I think you've had some of that, have you, Dakota?
Yeah, so, the, I mean, like everybody, for staffing purposes, um, you know. Unfortunately, the buyouts are kind of the, the way of the game now, um, with staffing shortages everywhere, especially. Um, you know, a comparable agency that covers this area would be the state police, and they're, I understand they have a much larger budget than us, but that's what we're, we're faced against, um. And so, you know, with them being able to afford these buyouts, uh, you know, at the drop of a hat, um. That, that's a, an issue we're facing, and I suspect that, that we would lose, um, the opportunity to hire at least probably one of these individuals. To the state police where they would be able to, uh. The buyout wouldn't be as much of an issue come May, because that was also something that we had discussed, um, you know, maybe waiting until May and try to fill this, um, which I think. I, ideally, in a perfect scenario is. If, if we were given, uh, then an additional position to fill out our staffing needs, um, we would like to try to wait until May for one of those individuals. To help offset that, uh, buyout, but, um, for the purpose of, uh, we would like to hire one of them now, um, if we're. In an ideal world, if we would be looking at hiring both of those individuals, um, regardless of which one we hired now, they drop at almost, or they decrease, their buyout amount decreases at almost the same rate. Um, so it, the total cumulative amount between the two wouldn't matter which order we hire.
So, uh, and if it didn't work out, and I went somewhere else in the meantime, before they started, we're reapparent, that buyout applies to us too.
We, we, if we hire them and pay X amount of dollars, and if they, we, we get that, yes, we get our money back.
That's what I, I thought.
And but, oh, I'm sorry. The supplemental budget that the governor submitted has an extra five point five million dollars for the state police, and that's thirty-one positions, and I, I will tell you. That they are actively soliciting, uh, bluepens. Uh, to buy and, and to fill their open positions, and they've already changed their class, you used to have to go for another ten weeks. And be stay at the academy, now you go six weeks and you go home at night, so they, I don't want to say lower their standards. Because that, that's not a fair assumption, but they have changed. To accommodate, you know, the group of people that they're soliciting.
They're trying to track.
They're trying, there you go, there you go, you know, they're trying to do the same thing everybody's trying to do with track people.
But yes, to answer your question about the buyout, that buyout applies, if we were to send somebody to the academy today, and another agency hires them within that year, we would als, they would, we would also receive that money. Or if it doesn't work out and they leave and they get hired by another agency, it just depends on when they graduated the academy, what year, and then how many anniversary dates have rolled around since that graduation. And that, like I said, it, it's prorated depending on how many years, after five years, it dissipates to zero.
These two are both May graduates, you know, they grad, the academy runs two a year, they graduate one in May, and they graduate one in June.
So if you, if we were to hire, not go this way, I'm sorry to be so.
No.
If it doesn't go this way, you'd have to wait. Till the next class for, to have that person fill in your schedule, right?
Yeah, so I guess, if, if, and your question, right, if, are you asking if we were to send somebody to the academy?
Yeah, if you were to hire me.
Yep, so if we're to hire.
Send me to the academy, I can't start till I graduate.
Well, exactly, so what would happen is, is we would hire you now, um, we're in February, likely, the, the likelihood is that you would not get into that August academy. Due to the fact that there's usually typically a waitlist currently right now, um, so it would be a greater likelihood that you wouldn't go until the January academy and graduate of May of twenty-five. Um, so up until that time, what that would look like is, you know, getting your uniforms, you would do, uh, the majority of your field training. Uh, which is the required, uh, the three hundred and sixty hours, uh, the eighteen weeks at the academy, the academy costs. Um, so there would be a significant period in which, um, we would still have to either fill overtime shift here, um, in addition to the training expenses. And that added time of field training and having you ride with somebody else where you aren't necessarily as effective. Scheduling wise, you know, as far as being out on your own and covering your own area and handling your own calls for service. Um, so there is a significant, it does come with an added cost, however, there's a significant benefit, um, to hiring somebody that is certified or is a blueprint. Both, one in regards to the training costs, but two, also in regards to, um, the limited or decreased costs. Or time that we would have to fill vacant patrol shifts with the overtime costs.
And that's the whole reason to buy out.
Well, the, yeah, those, those costs, that costs that are incurred by the academy, it sends it, you know, so.
I don't want you to plot something. Well, there's a slight risk though, to, if we pay for the guy, and this guy quits and becomes a nutrition, we get nothing. So it's only if he goes to another agency we get our money back, so, it's, it's a slight risk, if the guy made it through the academy, hopefully he's gonna stay in law enforcement, that is the risk we run. The other thing is, where are you guys gonna get the money? What's the combined cost of two you were hired today?
Yeah, can you give me the May buyout?
I just want to hire, I, I don't really even have the name to present to you now, because I wanted to see where we were gonna go with this and do that.
If you go there next week, next month, whatever, or second one, I think, in May, we've got X amount of money to raise here in, in the month, this month. What's the total cost of that, for twenty twenty-four?
In May?
No, for twenty twenty-four, these two guys, we're gonna hire these.
So, from doing the math, just, I, I don't think you preempt your question, from what you, it looks like if you, if you hired the. Because I don't have the, the expensive one. Now, which is sounds like the way we were steering, and then the less expensive one in May.
And what's the expensive one cost?
Forty-seven thousand.
Forty-seven, four point five.
What's the other one cost?
Seventeen to fourteen, so that's added to two thirty-nine, that's sixty-four to thirty-nine. And we have, what?
Twenty-four five, uh, excuse me, twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so.
We, we don't get the forty thousand if you don't hire a baller this year.
Scott, did you have a May buyout amount for number one?
What, what was? Thirty-seven, six one nine.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the buyout in May for the second one is seventeen to fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Those together for you for the next meeting.
So, so just to let you know, those are almost identical if we're going across like that. Uh, so, like if we're to do the opposite of what I just stated, it's sixty-three, four, four, two. If you did both, but you said that's highly unlikely, right? Well.
Is one person, we have an open position now.
Yeah.
And when we had the budget discussions, we had to fill all the positions before we came back and asked for a second position.
Yeah.
So we're really looking right now to hire that first position, that is in the budget, the issue is, can we find the extra money for that buyout?
So I'm just looking at the whole package, uh, but. In how it would probably work, right, is you would hire one now and another one after May, is that fa, is that a fair assumption?
If, if, if you approve us, hire in that additional position.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
That's most likely as opposed to both doing now.
One fills us.
Okay. So, and you have twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I do.
So, is Ipa. Out there, or can we, I know.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can take a look at that, honestly, I, I wouldn't say a hundred percent right now, but I mean. If you're talking revenue loss, the potential, as long as it's not one of the no-no's, so.
That's the only, that's, that's my question.
But I could double check that before, especially since he's gotta come back anyway, but I could answer that confidently.
My personal is always, yeah, but I have a hired a. Mental health liaison, so last year, and used our funds, now I don't know if there's a difference between, you know, law enforcement officer or a mental health liaison, but I do know that they spent, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars.
So the thing that we're finding is that a lot of places are getting pretty creative, and where I was actually, or at the end of this, that. Uh, we're, we're gonna come back with some additional information, the K's been working on collecting from what other places they've done, but. One, they won't tell you for sure, so you take your gamble one way or the other, whether it's, they'll never make an issue of it or not. And I, I, I mean, to me, I think it's potentially one of those gray areas that we would have to. Look at and then come back to, give you a real sense what it on. You could pass a straight face kind of sort of testing. But that doesn't mean other things haven't been added, uh, you know, law enforcement and overall. Go back to the original intent by the beginning of this, some of that was, again, I, you know, I prefer to have something I can take to you and say. Yeah, if you're gonna do it, then it would likely fall into this category, not just off the top of my head, sure.
Well.
Because I'm not sure that's necessarily the case, but.
My personal feeling, just knowing, you know, how hard it is to. You know, who goes to you folks who want to be law enforcement officers because. Just crazy out there, what you read, you see, and. I would. I would support, the big caveat, how do you pay for? You know, hiring, doing just what you're up on. Which is hire one now, and, you know.
What would you exactly, would you like to see from us for information for the next week?
Well.
Are there any other, are there any other reserve accounts, the sheriffs?
We can look through, so we have, so I, I, I'll look through, see what we have, uh, commissioners, see if there's anything else.
Yeah, Michael, you know, I guess, we'd be asking all of you collectively for ideas.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, I'll check the other component of that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we can review what, what we have in the accounts too.
So what, but at the moment, what we need to come up with, and what he's asking, I believe, is how to pay for just the buyout, then there's paying for the.
Question.
Right.
Yeah, I think ideally, what our, our question coming into this was is, you know, I understand, and I don't expect you guys to have an answer today, obviously, about where that money would come from. But before we extended that conditional offer to that individual, we, I guess, wanted to have some sense of, if it was that forty-seven thousand dollar buyout, is that something that you guys feel? Uh, or believe that we could come up with that amount, so that we could extend that initial, because out of, you know, good faith and the same sense, and I want to tell the guy that, you know, here's your conditional offer and then two weeks. But we can't afford to.
We can't say.
Okay.
So, well, and to me, the, the conditional offer. I got the same issue with even the thirty-seven, I, I know there's ten between them, but it's, it's still, where's the money gonna come from, and that, that's. I think. You folks need to power out. Above that.
Kind of why we're doing this today is to see which of, lack of the values your temperature is about this, and then we'll sit down and come back with a final proposal for you next time.
Well, my temperature is, I would support it if you can answer those questions. We can pay for it, Mike, Michael was comfortable with that. That's just me.
And we can't offer, offer anybody until we have it figured out.
Yeah.
Where, if we're willing to pay the money for it, so, to me, we can't offer, do a conditional offer. Till, I'm worried about the money side of it, so, well, we get other two, two weeks or whatever.
But I think that they could talk with this guy and say, this is what we're talking about. Yeah.
Michael, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I know what you're asking me to do, it's not bad. From my standpoint.
I'll be in touch. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
The way, uh, the way you ever hear back from Mr. Grandeur?
He's setting out different. He rated it away.
My understanding is that the. Work did, um. It's not available for three months.
Twenty?
About three months.
Oh.
But they don't have anything on the lot, the darlings are on the lot, but. One is sixty-two thousand, it's already got all the extras on it, it's ready to go.
Is that a bid price? What's the regular price of?
It should have the manufacturer, I guess, the retail, I think it was like five thousand.
I mean, sixty-two thousand bid price?
You say it ready to go.
It, it's on the lot, it's delivered tomorrow.
Oh. Yeah.
It's like, the manufacturer's retail. Suggest retail is sixty-one seven. They've added the other stuff. They didn't give us some. It's the.
Well, we have a position to wait three months, I mean, we have a, the sheriff have.
Don't depend on.
Grandeur.
It's gonna be your call.
I know, but it's gotta work for you all.
I mean, if we don't have a vehicle, then you have to start paying in that first amount, you know, which we don't have the budget either.
For what, he can't, he can't respond.
We would maintain a spare. Sheriff's department.
So there's three, there was four, if I understood this, but I mean, this number changes all the time, I guess, depending on the day, but. There's three that they would have, because we had the one that got totaled, but.
Well, he's got, he's got four spares.
Well, he had four spares, but one of the spares is one of the regulars.
He's got three second on it, he's assigned one, it's for a part-time effort, so that's a, that's a deal.
So, but I mean, you'd have to.
I just don't think the sheriff's gonna work.
I just don't think the sheriff's not working, he hasn't been very forthcoming with.
Well, could we ask, I mean?
When we can ask, but then we've got to wait until, if, if he doesn't, unless you make some type of decision, then we have to wait until twelve.
Just killing time here, just a couple of months ago, I walked through the lot there, I saw cars, you know, fifty-two, fifty-three thousand, something like that, but on the lot. Now, and, and he does need approval cap, I mean, we've bought ten cans for a civil nipping time before, and he cut by with that three that's all he needed. The detective is not going to be transporting in the territory, he's going to be answering complaints, it's a, it's a transportation vehicle.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like pursuit pack.
No, and it's, and it's, he's, he's not only required to stop cars, he's not required to drive code three, I mean, it's a, it's just a, sheriff's department as a, as a detective, as a Chevy Traverse, so it's not absolutely necessary for a pickup, just.
Well, that's what was a bit special. I mean.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that we can either spend sixty-two now and buy this one, because it's on the lot. Or perhaps we change our specs in the back, we look for passenger cab, because you can buy another Chevy Traverse.
Or the Ford version or whatever.
No, but my personal opinion, you don't want to buy out of town. You can tell me about it, see if you want to go anywhere, so either, I mean.
That was, I forgot.
And we didn't bid Dodges, what's wrong with the Dodge? But it ran. I'd like to see, I'd like to see you, well, give it to Tim to go around, just to see what's on the lot, like a Ram. Between the two places in Ellsworth right now, what have they got that's, you know, fifty, fifty-two, fifty-three on the lot? And I just can't believe that they, you know.
Well, what I'm wondering is, uh, we have a bid for fifty-two, six, eighty-nine, that's three months away. The county owns a few cruisers, spare cruisers.
People made the request, Paul, have that. But, I'm not to speak for both, but I don't.
Well.
Listen, we tried the bid process, we're not happy with it, so we've complied with the bid process, now let's get practical. You know what I mean, let's, let's, let's make some sincere effort to find something reasonable that's available now. Tim stands for a second, so he needs a vehicle, he says.
Mr. Grandeur, is that, is there, I don't, it's politics that's bothering me, so, I, I, I mean, is it unreasonable for us to ask? Or, I don't know who does the ask, whether it's you or us, to, to use a spare cruiser for, I mean, you can say it's unreasonable.
I, I can't say it's unreasonable, I just don't know what the decision we got.
And even looking around, I mean, you don't meet again until twelve, so again, depending on the action you take today, he doesn't have the money to go buy anything off the lot, I mean, we would need.
That's my, that, that's.
A pro from you to, one way or the other, to, to, to know what it is that you're gonna authorize in order to actually get anything.
And we could do that by simply saying, okay, prove an omission, this is because we authorized the, the DA and the county administrator to purchase a vehicle, to exceed fifty-five thousand on the lot in Ellsworth. Well, go find something.
Well, can I do something like this, to prove, uh, that work bid and for the DA to, the staff on our.
We can approve it, we can approve this work this, because he's got the order of it, we, we don't want him ordering this vehicle. We're not gonna wait three months, we certainly don't want, he also.
Well, I was going to prove that as an alternative, and, and if you had other alternatives, prove those. Proving spending whatever you said, and five or, or, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking for a course of action.
I think we should try the idea of authorizing it to the fifty-five.
Okay, I'm going to move that we authorize the DA, the county administrator to search, uh, for a new vehicle in City Belts with dealings, uh, for vehicle not to exceed fifty-five thousand on a vehicle of their, uh, choice, now, it doesn't have to be a pickup, it could be a sedan, it could be one of that. You understand my motion?
And how is it being?
Pay.
We'll get paid for it out of our.
Yep.
I think we already.
I'm setting the motion. Any other discussion?
So, was there a reason, there was a reason for a pickup, right?
Was.
We always said, we always said that there was a, a trading value with pickup, you can put a hundred and twenty thousand, still get ten thousand dollars traded, you put a hundred and twenty on the fourth, maybe fifteen. We always thought, this is a case of where you can't get too much, so.
Why, and why does it have to be? In Ellsworth, like.
Service.
Well.
It doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be, I'm just saying on the lot. But I guess, I guess maybe I shouldn't have said, you haven't called it, okay?
No.
Maybe I shouldn't have said, maybe I shouldn't have said in the Ellsworth, but it should be something that can, can service, it's a Ram, it's a GMC, it's a Chevy.
It's Darlings, you can go.
Yeah, and, and, because didn't we buy police cruisers from Austria?
But they.
Or Downs.
I'm gonna remove the, I'm gonna remove a portion of that, that said, dealers in Ellsworth. With the understanding, I really suggest that you find a vehicle that can be serviced in Ellsworth. You know, the warranty work is, is efficient, tough as.
That's okay.
It's okay with me. So, I amended the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get underway.
All right, I'm sorry.
All right.
I'll be off on second.
So, at this time, not accepting the bids.
Yes, we're not accepting the bids.
And we're not compelled to do that.
No, no, most of these bids usually include that, but it's based on whatever you sent out, I mean, the final, I know it was in the last meeting, but I mean, I never saw the final ballot bid, there was the end of the deal, so. I'm assuming that would be.
Well, I wonder, you know, if they, if we had accepted that bid, if they would have gone out and found one. But I don't know.
You what?
If they would have gone out and found one.
If we accepted one.
If we, if we had accepted that fifty-two.
Well, they wouldn't have been looking for one, if we accepted it, we'd, we'd, we'd have taken it.
Now that he has fifty-five to spend, now they'll.
That's my point.
And I'm, I'm concerned too, that, uh, that Darlings, Chevrolet, bit of vehicle didn't take a dime off of the stick race. So, I mean.
Because there are some, I mean, I just went through this, I just had to buy another one, and I found. Plenty, quite honestly, I didn't pay that.
Pay what?
I didn't pay that fifty-two.
You didn't pay fifty-two? Certainly didn't pay sixty-two.
No.
All right, let's move on, uh, we've got our.
I'm gonna move set tax due date to September one, twenty twenty-four, because we do this every year, right? We do this every year, so, so September one, twenty twenty-four, and a four percent rate of interest that shall apply to delinquent taxes committed during the taxable year, does that do what you?
And not receive, and if not received by October thirty-first.
And.
They have thirty days to pay, we give them a full.
Bless to the delinquent taxes.
Right, yeah, okay, and the, the next question was, that rate is understood to be an annual, right?
For an annual.
And reading the statute, that's what.
Yeah, that's the way I have.
Yeah, okay, so I don't need to say anything other than what I've said, right? Okay, so do you want me to reread it?
Uh, so, why does the sale amount not exceed two percent?
It talks about two per, and that whole formula about, that's, that's, I had to read that a few times. We set a rate that can't be, there's a whole formula for determining that rate, right? It's gotta be within two percent of what that formula is.
Uh, no, if two percent can't be an amount exceeding two percent of the sum, and I say the sum means the tax.
Yeah, two percent up.
A tax.
Yes.
Well, four percent is too much.
Four percent has been a customary interest rate that has been.
How do we get away with that, Paul? In thirty-eight, seven or six, that's a lot.
I think there's quite a formula involved, it's not just that two percent.
That's how I understood it. Where is that memo again?
Well, English, like the, the. Let's, let's just mean, they exist, and I'm not even talking about what they do. If a fractional division necessitates that addition, and if they demonstrate that necessity, record of portion, tell them.
So, that's if you didn't, like, so if you didn't commit taxes or the assessment by July fifteenth, and for whatever reason, as a result of you committing after that July fifteenth date, that it costs the municipality money, then the county had to basically back that off on their tax assessment, and the county had to eat that, is essentially what, what I understood.
That paragraph, the portion paragraph, has nothing to do with the interest.
Interest rate, that's right.
Okay, so that two percent is not, that's not the over the interest.
That's not.
Yeah.
No, no.
Okay, but.
It's the next.
So, the two percent, okay, now that I'm reading, the two percent is like basically like an overlay, if you want to look at it.
Surcharge.
Yeah, something like that.
And we can't exceed two percent.
Can't exceed two percent of that overall amount.
If we do that, we've not, we've never done that.
Yeah, it's from what I've seen in recent years, for sure, the county just assesses what it, what it's due.
We don't have that language on, on the formula, right? Not, not gonna need it, but I just, I'm looking at the two-page email from Michael.
So, yeah, they, the thirty-six, one eighty-six interest, um, person who fails to pay any tax other than tax imposed pursuant to one five, on before the last date prescribed, payable liable for interest on the tax, calculated from the date and compound of monthly, and then the rate of interest running calendar year equals the highest prime rate as published in the Wall Street Journal on the first day of September, the preceding calendar year, or if the first day of September falls on weekend or holiday, on the succeeding business day, rounded up to a whole percent, uh, run it up to the next whole percent plus three percentage points. And the rate, the rate of interest, and that goes on to say two thousand eighteen prime, it's kind of the start of that. Uh, and then it continues on, and I can read the whole thing.
No, I, I, I didn't see.
No, and that's the whole, that's the formula.
Wouldn't that speak of the actual interest rate calculation?
It's much of formulas, it is a criteria, right?
Well, it's a criteria, but they, they also talk about the highest prime during that period, so.
And the maximum set by the state trader, that applies to the municipality, what they have, and that, if you go back and look at it, it looks like that's what the percentage point in September twenty-three was at the time as well, but, so.
Your suggestion is go the four percent, that was why I.
Generally speaking, we don't have a lot of loyalty, I guess, and even when we do, I think the, it's, the county's been generous in the past to a degree. There was certain reasons that perhaps that might, but generally speaking, it's not an issue.
So, the motion, motion on the floor is okay, Mark?
Yes.
All right, call, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, we're to the. Uh, first, first of all, I want to apologize for this controversy, I, I only asked to have continued, because I want to understand why we were, why we were committed to, to, to having to appoint this person. I see now it's in, it's in legislature, it's in statute, and some of the towns, I think, were concerned that we weren't in favor of the recommendation, and I apologize for that misconception on them, so go ahead, Paul.
I want to move to appoint Bailey Bowden, who now has got service, one of the Hancock County Representatives on Hancock County Planning Commission's executive board.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. But now we understand it, so that's great, I didn't fully understand it either.
And I did respond back to, uh, the manager, sent the original email out to everybody, so I think she's probably making people aware that that, it was more procedural issue, not nothing to do with the merits of the, the N A S, as.
And, and to be honest, I welcomed it, I, well, you know, we, because of that, we got more.
Well, and her feedback, and you probably haven't otherwise, yeah.
Which is great.
All right, so, uh, community benefits grant application process, so, uh, we're essentially going to, uh, review the documents that, uh, folks have put forward to us, they do individual scoring on it, uh, and then those scores are going to be sent to myself, uh, prior to the next meeting, and we'll review the results.
Okay, do we?
Seem to go along with what you gentlemen want to do?
That makes perfect sense to me, and the scoring sheet is where?
Well, I said the last page in your packet. There's simply this, yeah, some ratio.
There's this thing with the box.
Well, that last page, right?
And I can forward that stuff to you in order, if you want me to copy that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was, a- and what the scores are, are in this document.
Well, they haven't, well, yes, the criteria stuff should be in that stuff, yeah, now, obviously, you haven't done the scoring yet, but.
Scoring, you just have to keep, it's all explained here.
But it should all be there.
Okay, yeah, that sounds, yeah, and if we could have it as a spreadsheet or document, so it would be easier to forward to.
Just.
To the chair would be great.
Scoring sheet, some reason.
We have a big clip.
Paul.
Thank you.
All right, oh, thank you.
All right, so, good at that, now we're gonna move on to our personnel policy transfers. This has to do with.
Well, there's two, two components, the non-union personnel policy is that first, uh, section, the two-page here that you're given, based on the conversation last time, so it has the upward transfers, downward transfer, and then the lateral transfer with proposed changes, based upon my understanding, I don't, where you were trying to get this, uh, to avoid confusion. And then there, the other portion of it is basically three, two-page letters anyway, for side letter, potential side letter agreement, one for each one of the units here in Hancock County, uh, which is essentially the same change, but using the language that specifically included in one of those agreements, showing the proposed change, so. Looking for feedback, if the personnel changes are acceptable, and we can make change to that. And then if the side letter agreement, proposed changes, language changes you want me to pursue, then I can go back to the, uh, business rep for the union, and, and kind of make a claim for what we'd like to try to accomplish, and have that discussion, yeah, so.
So, in reading these over, this seems to me to be consistent with everything we've talked about.
It certainly makes it clear, from my standpoint, in terms of what should apply.
Because I think I said last meeting, whatnot, this is precipitated by the fact that when this was originally written, there was one, there was one scale.
Yeah.
Now they're four.
Yeah.
And so, this makes it clear, we're going from one scale to another, what the intent of the policy is.
Yeah, that's the session. Okay, so, I'm gonna make some motions, I'm gonna move to approve the revisions to section, what is that, twenty-six?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, so, section four, changes in employment of the Hancock County personnel policy is presented.
It's, thank you, motion article twenty-six.
And it's article. Uh, visions, the articles. Uh, vision, it's the article instead of section, okay.
Section, so you said.
Yeah, sorry. So that's my motion.
And second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna move to authorize the county administrator to negotiate proposed side letter agreements related to, uh, internal transfers for the business agents for the union for each of the three bargaining.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And last. Uh, just as we kind of mentioned briefly at the beginning, um, I have been emailing and met again this week with Kitty, just to review opera projects and funding and interpretation of, the awards and the criteria and all that. Uh, so she is gonna provide some type of memo for your meeting next meeting on the twelfth, and we should have some potential clarity on some questions that were even asked, and, but the last, most recent in terms of cat cattle projects, you can base it on that nature. And that will be forthcoming.
And we have any, uh, comments or suggestions for future due diligence issues?
Okay, so the, oh, the meeting is.
So twelfth and twenty six in March is what I have listed. Normally, it would have been, but they're, they're not.
I want to emphasize that on the next.
Yeah, I definitely gonna.
So, we, it's.
My whole court, all by myself.
Yeah.
It's the, the twelfth and twenty six.
Twenty six, I believe, is what we did, yeah. So basically, it's pushing both meetings back a week, and the same thing in April, instead of having it the first Tuesday, it's the second Tuesday, and then two weeks after that.
They're both Tuesdays, Bill.
They're both Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Yep, it's not B Tuesday.
Motion.
Move for adjournment.
Aye.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.